Okay, well, um, so with four people, the, we can, we can proceed with four. And the only caveat is if we go ahead with four people, I'm hoping that other people will still come, but if we go ahead with four people, then all four have to vote the same way. If you're comfortable with that, then, then we can proceed. Is it, do you two need to talk about that? Or?
Yeah, is it possible for me to talk with my client about that briefly?
Sure. How do we do that?
Well, I'll tell you what, maybe we should go on, maybe, maybe we'll mute ourselves and go on a phone call.
All right.
Happy to do that. Greg, you want to just call me?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Now my Zoom is acting weird.
Well, I, I don't think it's yours, maybe it's not your Zoom.
It could be the connections.
The agenda was put up.
I, yep, actually, I just put up the agenda and the next one, and I've got the legal notice right here.
Yep.
So we can go to that.
And what I just gonna has an order that he is.
Do we, did we hear, is Margaret not coming or, or the, somebody else not coming? Did we, do we know?
Julie, Steve couldn't make it.
Couldn't, Steve is the only one who told us that he formally couldn't make it. And so Greg can now share.
Well, he, he doesn't want to share yet.
I know, but he's all set up so he don't have to go fumbling later. Saying, where is that button again?
So we never heard from Margaret, Steve couldn't make it and Sue and we're, we're, we have one alternate seat open. I was hoping that the two people, we have two people who are interested in being alternates. And I was hoping that they were going to join, but apparently not. So Julie, do you think you could check with Sue?
I can do that.
That would be good. We're, we're back.
All right, I think we're going to go ahead.
Okay.
Um, and hope the fifth person shows up, but we'll see how we do here.
Julie is checking with Sue Scott.
This is probably my 350th Zoom meeting.
Today?
Oh, maybe this whole thing started, but it's been just absolutely nuts.
Oh, there's Sue.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That's good. I will back out of that.
Okay, we're set.
Hi, Sue.
Hi, Sue.
Hi, Sue.
So I'm going to call, hi, Sue. I'm going to call the meeting to order and I would like the members of the, an alternate of the zoning board of appeals to identify themselves. Karen, why don't you start?
A Karen Copteau member.
Bill Davies member.
Nancy Schoenholz member.
Nanette Falkenberg chair, Sue?
Her lips are moving, no one can hear her. Sue, you're muted.
Please, maybe you could take the agenda down and we could see her and maybe we can.
Okay.
Oh, there she is. Oh, no, that's not.
Sue? Sue, you're muted. Why, why am I screaming? She can't hear me.
Okay, now, it looks right now like it's an open mic, but we can't hear her. Sue, we can't hear you. Can you hear us?
Looks like she's saying yes.
It looks like she's saying yes.
Sue, I'm going to move you up.
But if we can't hear her.
Always join in by phone, too.
I'm hoping that by the time it comes time that we need to hear her, that she will have figured it out.
Yeah, it looks like she doesn't know what to, to do.
I wonder if her volume was turned down.
I was just thinking the same thing.
Also found sometimes if people hang up.
Can you turn your volume up, Sue?
Sometimes if people disconnect and reconnect, it helps, too.
I don't know if you have a phone number? Do we have it? Do we have a phone number?
We do have a phone number. I've got to rearrange my screens to get it. Sue, if you can hear me? Actually, I'm going to put up on the screen the number for you to dial. Well, let me go back to sharing screen for this. Right, Sue, here's the phone number and this is your ID code. I hope she's getting her phone.
Well, she's disappeared from the screen.
Yes.
That's, that's a good sign.
That is a good sign.
If she just signs in again, she'll probably be okay.
Did you believe that a cell, we got a phone?
Do we think she can still hear us?
I think she must have been able to because she did get up and got the phone. All right, so I'm going to take this down. Actually, I won't. She's going to have to put in the connection numbers.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start in hopes that she's hearing us and that we will have figured out when she needs to, when she has questions to ask, that we'll have figured it out by then. So I will go ahead and we can get through some of the housekeeping. I'm going to read the legal notice. The Roxbury Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 29th, 2021 at 7:30 PM via Zoom and teleconference to consider the application of Michael D. Fleischer, assesses map 11 lot 15 located at 27 Battle Swamp Road case file 2021-0084, variance to construct a 665 square foot covered porch on the east side of the house. Reference to zoning regulations variance from Regulations 3.10.3. The hearing can be accessed as follows. A copy of this application is available for review online at www.roxbury.com and at Falkenberg Chairperson. Okay, Julie, do you have confirmation of?
Yes, of the mailings, we do.
Sue? Can you hear? Okay. We have confirmation of the mailings. So we're going to go ahead and hopefully by the time you need to talk, we'll have this figured out. Michael or Greg? I'm not sure who's presenting.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be presenting tonight.
Okay.
Um, and if we have any questions that I can't answer, we've got Michael here ready to answer them. So if I can have screen sharing.
Yes, you do.
I do.
Yes.
I will see if I can share my screen here. Let me move you guys over just a little bit. Guess this is what I'm trying to share. All right, do you see, do you see this?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, the, the reason we're here for a variance, this shows you where the screen porch is located. It's in the darker color. And that, that is completely consistent with all of the regulations. It meets the 50-foot front setback, it meets the side setbacks, more than meets the side setbacks, meets the rear setback by even more than that. The only problem is this is being attached to a house that is a little bit close to the road. As you can see up here, the, the, the house is, was built. Well, I should tell you that this is actually, this is the Cyrus Wetmore House that was built in 1760 and the portion of the house built in 1760 is this portion right here. It's, it's the main, actually, yeah, I think it's this portion right here, which is the main Cape Cod Antique House. In, in the 19th century, around the beginning, the late 18th, early 19th century, these buildings next to the road were built. And so these were all built 150 or more years, maybe 200 years before Roxbury had zoning regulations. And as, and because this is a non, this is a non-conforming structure, because we're expanding or adding, we, we need a variance to do that, and that's why we're here. I want to go just briefly now to my pictures so you can see what our challenges are. Can you see those pictures?
No. No, it's still the map.
Still the map. All right, well, let me do this. Let me, let me get rid of the map. And new share. All right, here we go. I think I know how this works. All right. I think you've each got a copy of this, but as, as you can see, if one were to sit on top of this wall, you can have one hand touching the house and the other in the road. And, and so this house is really located right on the road. And, and of course, it's been there for, for a couple of hundred, more than a couple of hundred years. This is what it looks like from across the street. I'm standing now across the street from it. And as you can see, the, the portion of the house right here, I'm trying to put my cursor on. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but it's box right here with the chimney sticking out of it. That's the original 1760 house. Then these were the ones that were added in the late, the late 1700s, early 1800s, right around that time. And, and we think at one point in the, in the 18, in the 19th century, it was a cobbler shop. And we, at least, at least the historicals, folks who did the historical book on Roxbury think that, that that was the Anthony Sager, Sager, cobbler shop. The house has been added to over the years, all of it behind the setbacks. And so this is looking at the right side of the house or the, I guess that would be the west side of the house. This is looking at the east side of the house. It's hard to see because of the trees, but it's, it's not, it doesn't extend out as far. It's truncated and doesn't extend quite out as far. And so here we are, this is where we're going to put the porch. It's, it's going to, originally, the porch was, when in 2012, you granted a variance to put a porch on the house and that porch was located most partly on the side. It was going to wrap around this chimney, come out here and then wrap back and go further back than the porch we're proposing goes. If you look at this diagram here, that porch would have come from here like this. Well, I'm trying. It would have come out from the, from front of the chimney down here and then back in the back of the house, back into this area. But instead, what we want to do is we want to square it up with the front of the house. This gives us a more regularized house from an architectural standpoint, because you see, you've got almost as much on this side as you have on this side. And it, it's still, is, is still behind the setbacks and still complies with all the setbacks. And then in addition, as a bonus, it's smaller. It's 60 or some odd square feet smaller than the, than the one that was approved in 2012. So it actually reduces the nonconformity below what it, what it, what it is now. If, if that porch, if we built that porch, we have the right to build it and we, we prefer to build this porch. Another issue that we have is when you come out the back of the house, the land drops off pretty precipitously. There's a big ravine back in here. And this is what it looks like when you're standing on the downside of it. So you could easily come off the, we wanted to get the porch a little bit further away from this as a point of safety. And as you can see, this is what it looks like looking from east to west, or I should say from west to east. Here's the back of the house. That porch was going to come out somewhere around here, about halfway to the, to the cliff. And the problem is, is that this cliff doesn't just, it's not one solid straight line. It comes in and out and in. And there are tripping hazards and things like that. And so the feeling was if the porch were over here and someone exited at night, made a wrong turn, they might find themselves in a bit of, bit of trouble. So that was another motivating factor to try to, to try to put this porch out front where we want to put it. So let me, let me close this. Whoops, I lost my, my sharing. Okay, now, um, I believe this is, this is, let's see, it's not, it's not up here. Don't know why, but I can't share what's on my desktop now. Let me try activating the share button again. It's, it's giving me some grief here. Okay, there we go. All right, this is, um, this is where the old porch, this is where the porch was supposed to be originally. This is what your variance in 2012 gave us the right to construct. And, and, and the, and the preference is to, to bring it square up with the front, come out here, down like this, and then over here just to the, just to catch the back door of the house right in this corner. And so that, that, that's what we're wanting to do and I'll, I'll show you that one as well. Whoops. Sorry, I'm not very good at this screen sharing. There we go.
Getting the picture.
You're doing good.
Well, see, there, that's where we want it to be and we think this is going to be much further away from the, from the steep areas and we think it's going to make a better front appearance. And it's going to be smaller and reduce the nonconformity. So for all those reasons, that's, that's really why we want to, we want to do this. I think we also had some elevations in the package so you can see what it looked like. It's interesting because I know that everybody on zoning boards of appeals in 2015, we're, we're here, let me stop the sharing. I know in 2015, everybody got themselves in a bit of a, a concern when the Barilo versus zoning board of appeals in the town of Branford came out and it, it raised the issue of what boards of zoning boards of appeal should do with application to expand pre-existing legally non-conforming structures and uses. And in that case, the court denied an application, overturned the granting of an application. But I want to tell you that you should not be worried about Barilo because Barilo actually contains a section which gives you the precise answer to why this is not only approval, but should be approved. What Barilo said is it noted, it said that we note that there's a narrow exception to the traditional test for obtaining a variance. The test for obtaining a variance is you have to show exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship. We call that hardship. And you have to show that it doesn't, it's, it's, the proposed thing is not in violation of the comprehensive plan of zoning, which is your entirety of your zoning regulations as they lay out on the ground and how the town is organized. So those are the two things we have to show to get a variance. Now, Barilo says that there's an exception to the test where there's no hardship. So even if, now, we think we have pretty good hardship here because we think that between the topography issue, between the antique houses that's right on the road that we can't really change, we couldn't tear it down if we wanted to. And there's a, there's a lot of things like that that we, we are sort of stuck with. We think we have a good case for hardship on the basis of those things. But we don't even have to show hardship whenever we have a situation in this narrow exception. And the narrow exception came from a case called Adelson. And in Adelson, the court, the Connecticut Supreme Court said, you don't have to show hardship if you're coming in with something that is less, is a less obnoxious use. You know, you, you've got a pre-existing legally non-conforming use that nobody likes and, and it's no longer legal and you're going to propose to replace it with another non-conforming use. If the second non-conforming use is less objectionable or is, or reduces the nonconformity, then you don't need to show hardship. And that's what Adelson said and that's what, that's what Barilo said. And then, you see, in that case, they, they had, they had some kind of a aluminum casting factory and they, and it had been there before zoning and they wanted to replace it with an auto repair shop, which was not permitted in the zone either. And, and the Adelson court, the Supreme Court said, you know what, it's the pro court rule that was less objectionable. You get it. You don't need to show hardship. And so that, that, that's, that's the hardship rule is, is not entirely correct. And there's several other cases that came down here. Now, in Barilo, the reason they turned their thing down is they pointed out that yes, there's this exception, but it doesn't apply here because in Barilo, the applicant wanted to increase the nonconformity. They wanted to make it more nonconforming. And so the court says, so you don't fall under the Adelson exception. So I guess my point on this is, is that Barilo is not something to be afraid of in this case because it actually contains the seeds of the reason why this application should be granted. And that's because we think we've got good hardship, but even if we didn't, we don't need to show it. We just need to show we're reducing the nonconformity. And on one of these documents here, I think it's this one. I'm going to call this thing up and I am going to try to share it with you because this actually shows the, the reduction in the. Okay, give me one second while I manipulate everything around the. I, I don't know if I can make this bigger, but if you, if you look at the, if you look at the, the one that was approved in 2012, it's 738 square feet. And the one that's approved that we're asking to have approved now is 665. So it's 72 square feet, 73 square feet smaller. And hence the nonconformity is reduced. And so we think that brings us squarely within, within the Adelson rule, the Adelson exception that Barilo cites on this. So the next question is, well, what about the comprehensive plan? And one thing that's important to know is that your, your regulations are not like the regulations in Branford that were at issue in Barilo or some of the other towns. Your regulations, most regulations say you can't expand the nonconformity, period, end of story. That's all they say. Your regulations have several provisions that allow nonconformities to be expanded. You've got a 25% increase that you allow nonconforming structures to be increased by. You've got other provisions that talk about how you can, you could, you don't need, you don't even need a variance if, if you're, you're doing something that's enlarging a structural alteration to an existing building, provided the use of buildings shall conform to all other requirements of the regulations. And so you've got several different provisions that actually allow for nonconformities to be expanded. So your comprehensive plan of development includes the, the taking into consideration and allowing expansion of nonconforming uses and, and structures under certain circumstances. The other thing is the porch that we're proposing does not violate the comprehensive plan because it meets, because this property and that, with the exception of that old part of the house that's right on the road. Otherwise, the property is, you need four acres, it's got 10.16. The, the building we're proposing, it meets all the setbacks, it meets the front yard setback, the lot, it meets the, the rear and side yard setbacks, it meets the lot fronted, the lot meets the frontage and lot with standard. You can put a 250-foot circle on the lot. The FAR is, is I think a third of what you allow. The height is of this porch is not more than two and a half stories or 40 feet. Clearly, the, the buildings on the property meet the minimum requirement of 800 square feet with total living of 1,000. So in every way, shape or form, this application, this, this proposed porch meets the regulations. It doesn't violate the comprehensive plan. It's a, it's a screen porch on a residence in a residence district. So for all of those reasons, we believe we're squarely, fully within the comprehensive plan. And we believe that we are, we, we have, we, we have hardship, but we don't need to prove hardship because of, we meet the Adelson test of reducing the nonconformity. So with that, you have any questions?
Um, let me, let me open it up for questions.
I, I think, I think Greg, you just said, answered the question that I had, but to clarify, this is a screened porch, correct? There's no, it's not, there's no other, you know, a permanent type of construction. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, it is, it is permanent construction and then it's, it's a porch building. Let me see if I can find.
It's a roof, it's open. In other words, it's open on three sides.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's open on three sides. It has screening on three sides and, and it's got a roof.
Right, okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that in my own head.
Yeah, it's, um, it's a nice looking porch. I'm kind of in front of finding elevation here. And let me share this with you.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's this piece right here at the end. So you can see it's screened, but it, it's, it's got a, you know, it's got a gable end roof. This is the side that faces south. So this faces the back of the house. This is the back of the house. And then this one here in the, in the bottom left-hand corner, that is the north elevation. So that's looking at it from the front of the house. So you see, they're going to put a little stone wall at the bottom here to, to sort of crack in with this stone wall and, and, you know, not have people's feet sticking out. And then, and then on the east elevation, this is looking at it from the east side of the house. You can see that it's a screen, it's a screen porch. With, with, and the other thing is that there's this little area here that's not screened and, and this is designed to tie into the house. It's how it gets connected to the house. And so the front of it has a bit of a privacy, you know, the stone wall's a bit of a privacy screen on the front, but it is screened on all, on three sides.
So essentially, the only mechanical addition will be electricity.
Um, I, I, I don't know, Mike, you, you, I assume you're going to have electricity out there, but, and lights, but I don't know that you, you're not going to heat it, so.
No, it's not going to be heated or air conditioned.
Yeah. So it is, it's a traditional screen porch. It's, well, it's a very attractive traditional screen porch.
Yes, it looks nice.
Mike has a great architect. And the other nice thing is when you see from the front of the house down here, the north elevation, it, it, it does sort of give the house a little bit more of a lengthened, more traditional look rather than having just a little piece of it stuck in front of a chimney. You know, it's, it's just, it gives you a little bit more substantial appearance.
The chimney is inside of the screened-in porch?
Yes, the, the chimney's on the side of the, this chimney is on the side of the house and it's going to be, the porch is going to surround it. I, I, I think it has an outdoor fireplace. I'm not, I'm not certain.
It might, it might be a wood stove.
Or a wood stove or something like that. So I guess, I, I guess it's always been that way. It's always been, operates on two sides.
No, there's, I'm sorry, there's, Greg, there's not a, there's not a currently something on the outside.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I was, I was wrong about that. Okay, so, so yeah, so there's not going to be.
Pretty solid.
Yeah, it's a solid chimney. I, I couldn't remember. I'm sorry. I should have not spoken when I. And you know what? I had a picture of it here on the site pictures. It clearly does not have. It, you're right. I know what it was because, I'll tell you why. Hang on a second. I'm going to share this with you. It, uh, you're right. I know what it was, because, I'll tell you why. Hang on a second, I'm gonna share this with you.
So there's a door, there's a door to the porch from the outside.
Oh yeah, there, there is. But see, that, you know what I was remembering? There, there's a barbecue. There were grills in front of it. That's why I thought there was a, there was a, something there. But no, this is, there's nothing here. I'm sorry, I can go back to the, uh, elevations. Yeah, there would be a door on one side of it to get in and out. And, and there's also a door right on the back of the house, right over here. You know, there's, these are, these are doors, I believe. Am I right about that, Michael? Are these doors or?
Yeah, the, those are, the, the two in the middle are doors, and they're, those are existing.
Yeah, these are existing doors.
And there'll be a, there'll be a screen door that, 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 all the, all the doors will be screened.
So, can you just give us a sense of how far that is from the drop-off ledge?
Yes, um, let me show you, uh.
I guess my question is, what's the protection if somebody's coming in and out of those?
Well, distance primarily, because, in other words, it would not be set back any further than the existing doors that go out the back of the house. You see, because here you have these doors here, well, it's set back just a little bit more, but it's, 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 and it's nowhere near it. The other one was coming all the way into here. And so this one is staying away from it. And, um. And, you know, and we also think that it'll, it'll, it'll make it, it'll make it easier to avoid, to avoid that, because you won't have the short distance. This door to the house and then this door out of the.
Sorry, sorry, Greg.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Bill, Nancy, Sue, can. Nancy or Bill, do you have questions?
Um, I don't, I'd, where is Historic District Commission on this? Has, have they been notified? Is there anything they have to do for them?
I think they're only, um, I think they're. Only in the historic district, I think.
That, that, that's correct. And this is not in the historic district?
Okay, because of the age of the house, they didn't, I thought there was something. With the house that.
Uh, no, I don't think so. Uh, I don't know that this house is on the. I, I don't think this house is on the National Register or anything like that, so, uh. It, it, when you have a National Register house, then individuals can, can, you know. Insert themselves into the process of making changes to the exterior of the house, not the interior, but the exterior. But this is not a National Register, so that doesn't come up. And then, uh, I don't think the historic, this is not in the historic district, so I don't think the historic district commission would. Would, would say anything about this, um.
Age of the house, okay.
Yeah, e- even though the age of the house, I, I mean, I know, for example, they never had anything to do with my house. I'm not in the historic dis- district commission, but my house was built in 1780 and 1836. And, um.
Okay, um. I mean, the addition looks like it's common sense, look, the house will look better. Um, it puts them further away from this, from the, uh, hazards of that, that's, the property does have a steep slope in the back. Um, I, you know, myself personally, I don't see any. It's already, it's already been an approved, uh, variance. It's still active, so I, I don't see anything else. Nothing on it that's jumping on at me and says, I have any issue with it, but I don't know. That's my first take on it, first run through.
Okay.
Um, you know, it looks, it looks like it's gonna balance the house out. It looks like, uh, I don't, any feedback from neighbors, anything, any neighbors, any?
I have, I have talked to one neighbor who said they had no issue with it. Uh, they own two parcels, uh, next to this, and that's the trust.
Yeah. Nancy?
Um, I think it, I think it really enhances the, the front of the house to sort of add some symmetry. And, um, since a variance was already granted for that space. Um, it just seems to follow that there shouldn't be any, any problems going and moving forward with this.
Um, Sue?
Go on.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick questions, just for my own information. Um, the first variance, was it gonna be, Michael, was it gonna be two porches? Cause the, 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 the dimensions come in, into, in two separate pieces, was it?
I don't think so. Uh, I, I've been pulling that, that, uh, pulling that up right now. Give me one second. Actually have that file.
It has a 21 by 26 and a 22 by 9. Which adds up to 744. I'm just looking at the original application.
Yeah, I am too, and, um. May- maybe they, you know, because of the way they did this, uh, hold on a second, let me see if I can share this. I- is this what you're looking at?
I'm looking at the actual written application.
Okay, the, the only thing is, maybe they separated these two parts of it, because. Here, here where they wrapped the chimney, and then, then the part that stuck out the back.
I, I think it may have just been the way my contractor measured those two pieces.
Oh, oh, that, yeah.
21 by 26 and 22 by 9. Yeah, I think that's exactly what they did. I, I think the contractor, the. 21 by 26 and 20, this is 22 by 9. So I, I think that's what he did. He had, you know. I don't know, I think, I think it was just a question of, you need to, to get to two boxes to measure how big it is. It's in a regular shape, and so I think that's what he did. That would be my guess.
Okay. Julie, are there, there are no other members of the public here, are there?
No, there are not.
So, if there are no other. Sue, Sue?
I'm on the phone. I can't, I'm now, now, I'm trying to get back to my screen. This is ridiculous. I don't know what happened.
Do you have any questions?
Um, actually, no, I think it was very clear. Um. I fortunately was able to see the, the, um. The plans as, as you put them up, and I lost my audio too. So, I gave up. I just decided I better just call.
So, if there are no more questions, and Michael or Greg, if you don't have anything else to add. I would, uh, accept a motion to close the public. I don't see any reason to continue. I think we should just close it and then discuss in the regular meeting unless. Michael or Greg, you have any reason why you would want to continue.
No, I have nothing further to add. I think we've, I think we've finished. If you have no further questions, I think we're done.
Okay, so I will, um, I'd accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, then I am going to, um. Open the special meeting, and, um, Greg, Michael, you're welcome to stay. The way we do our agendas. Is we do the business of the, from the public hearing first, so.
Sure, I'll, I'll stick around. I'll just mute myself so I don't talk.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna call the special meeting to order. And, um. I will, I, I guess we all have to actually officially identify ourselves again. Okay, starting with Karen.
Karen Copte, a member.
Bill Davies, member.
Nancy Schoenholz, member.
Nanette Falkenberg here, and, and I, by the way, should officially welcome Nancy in her first meeting as a, a member. So, thank you, welcome Nancy. And I, I'm gonna move up Sue Scott, and that will.
Sorry.
So now, I'm gonna open, um, the discussion of the, um. The matter before us, and let me just, um, tell you that I, Greg and I had spoken before. The question of whether this should be a new, um, variant, or add an amendment to the old variants. And I, I was able to talk to Gail. Um, Gail's, um, thought was that it was probably. Um, easier and cleaner, Greg, to amend the existing variants. Um, so that's the approach that we would take, and as, as I understand it. Um, that we would then discuss and vote on this as a matter of accepting. Um, of, of amending the existing variants, and then you would withdraw this application? Is that how, is, is that the cleanest way to do it? That's what it seems to me.
Uh, no, I don't wanna, I don't think we should draw the application. I think what it, uh, it, it. There are two ways you could do it, obviously. One way would be to just simply amend the variants and treat this application as an amendment, rather than just a, a new variants. Or you could give a new variants, and then we would swap them. I would, we would kill the old one off. And, uh, and replace it with this one. I don't, I don't have a strong opinion about which way.
No, Gail, Gail, Gail's suggestion is that we amend the, we amend the existing variants. So what you're saying is we would treat the new application as an amendment?
Right, you, you would decide that you're gonna amend instead of granting a new variant, you're just gonna amend the old. I think that works.
Yeah, I, the only thing that I didn't, um. That I, that I will have to do afterwards is just talk to Peter. About how that gets treated then on the, on the land record. Um, cause we did something similar a couple months ago, and there were some specific things that had to, that had to get addressed. But I think we can do that after we've made a decision.
Yeah, I think we would probably want some kind of a, of a scripted, um, you know, you know how you give people a notice to record? We'd wanna do a scripted notice that amended the notice that's already on record.
That's what we did last time, exactly, exactly. And that was what Peter wanted, um, for the land record. So, uh, so let us discuss this as, um, a proposed amendment to the 2012. Um, existing variants, which has the impact of reducing the non-conformity by 73 square feet. It reduces, it reduces the non-conformity if the porch had actually been built, which it wasn't. Right, so it's, it, it's, it's reducing the non-conformity that you have authority to build at this point.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. The zoning on this lot permits the porch, so you're just reducing the size of it.
Right, right. And, and, um, just to, um. Cause these, all these questions came up for me, so, so we passed them on to the zoning board of appeals. Um. The 25% rule does not apply here, because the 25% rule. Only applies when the structure is going backwards. And since this is going to the side, John couldn't approve this based on the 25% rule. So that's why it's, that's why it's before us, because it, it's, because it's go, it, it's. Going to be now on the east, the east side, is that, is that correct? Okay. So let's discuss it, let's discuss the application in that, in that contact. Any discussion?
Um, I, I feel like it's, uh, it's almost like the application we've been waiting for. Uh, you know, the variants, the existing variants, you know, runs with the land, so there already is a variance for this, um, type of structure. Uh, they, it does reduce the proposed, um. Construction would reduce the, uh, non-conformity. The, are, you know, my favorite issue of topography is there. Um, so I, um. Regardless of, um, the. Uh, aesthetic considerations, which seem to be, um, you, you know, very positive. I think, my opinion is that, um, you know, from the technical. Aspects of the, of the zoning board of appeals, it meets, meets all our standards. So I would approve.
Okay, Sue?
I actually agree with Karen on every single point that she made. Um, especially, I mean, it, it does redo the, all the things that we've been talking about in terms of being able to reduce the. Um, the, the size of the. Original variance, which was already approved anyway. So we're working with an existing variance and making it smaller. And I agree on the topography, and looking at the, what we, I haven't seen the photos, the central large detail. That, that is something that you can't really, it's hard to work around. I would, I would vote to approve.
Nancy?
Oh, I think it's probably a good thing you waited nine years to do this. Uh, I, I agree with all that's been said. I don't think I can really add anything further at this point. So I, I definitely would want to approve this.
Okay, Bill?
Um, good common sense use of the land, it's reducing the non-conformity. Makes sense. I have, I had no issue with it. It makes, it makes the property look better, and it's, um. It's adding on to, uh, you know, adding on the, in the, in the right location on the house. I think it's gonna, it's gonna improve the, the look. It's already been approved, so we're reducing the request, so to speak, so I'm, I'm all in favor for it.
Okay, um, I concur with all the comments that have been made. And, um, would also support, uh, amending the existing variants. To permit the construction of a. Screen porch to the, uh, rear and east part of the, of the existing dwelling. Um. Greg, uh, just for your information, we've been struggling with Verillo. So we're actually happy to have one that is, um, straightforward. Um, because it's really limited, it's really placed some pretty significant limits on what we've been able to do, so. So it's, uh, it's nice to be able to, to, um, address one that's so straightforward. So, um. Would you, should I just state the motion?
Good.
Okay, um. The zoning board of appeals, um, moves. To modify, um, the existing variants. Um. ZBA 212 dash 0006. Um, to, to permit the construction of a screened porch. 655 square feet to the east and rear of the, uh. Um, the, the existing residence. Um, Greg, I would just ask you. Just, cause I know Gail will have this question. Does this then, um. Um, removes any abil- any ability of the. removes any ability, any ability of the owner then to construct and use the other 73 square feet or to go back to the existing variants? Is that right?
That's correct. It would be, it literally would replace it. It would be, it would change, it would change it to the new proposal rather than the old proposal. So he has no, he has no ability to build the old porch too.
The right word is replace rather than amend?
Well, I think you want to amend the variants. And I think that's, when you amend the variants to build in the location shown in the application for the proposed porch, I think that's in, you could say in replacement for the, you're amending the variants to permit the, to change the location to the porch that's shown in the application. I should, I should have crafted a motion. I didn't think to do that. And I usually do that. I must be getting sloppy in my old age. But I think, I think if you do that, the other thing I think you need to do is you need to have a finding of hardship or a decision. You don't need hardship. And a, and that it doesn't violate the comprehensive plan.
I think that the, I think that the, the most straightforward way to do that is to, is to note that the, the nonconformity is being reduced.
Yeah, I think you could, you could say that too. I, yeah, I think if you say that you're, you're amending the variants to replace the design that was previously approved with the new proposed design, that way you've got replacement there and you're clear. Maybe that's the way to do it.
Yep. Okay. Julie? Do you, could you read some?
Okay, what I have so far, and then we'll rework it a little. We're going to modify the existing, very, motion to modify the existing variants, ZBA 2012-0006, to permit the construction of a screen porch, six, or 665 square feet to the east and rear of the residence. And then I'm a little jumbled because we were throwing thoughts around about losing the 73 feet. And let's clarify and get that, this motion that you're replacing the 2012 variants with...
Yes, we're amending the 2012 variants.
And you're replacing it with this new map?
With a new application.
Okay. Okay. Do you want it to reference one of the maps?
We usually reference a map.
Yes, okay.
So that, is that?
I'm first trying to figure out which map you want to reference.
So 3?
I think it's, oh, I think it's A003.
Okay.
Yeah, as shown on site plan A-003.00. I'm sure you can clean that up tomorrow.
We can.
Include the date. I'll add the date to that.
Replace modify with amend to start.
Yes. Okay. Julie, do you want to read back what you've got? And we'll, and we can, let's vote on it and then we'll...
Okay, so you want to amend the existing variants, ZBA 2012-006, to permit the construction of a screen porch, 665 square feet to the east and rear of the residence? And you're going to amend ZBA 2012-006 with the new application as shown on site plan A003?
I think that's, that's good.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, let's go around. Karen?
I vote to approve.
Sue?
I vote to approve.
So we can see you and hear you now.
I know. One does telephone and zoom.
Yeah?
I vote to approve.
Who am I missing besides me?
Me. I vote to approve.
And I vote to approve. Okay, the variance is granted. Congratulations. We, Greg, we'll be in touch. Once I talk to Peter, we'll be in touch.
All right.
And and then, yes, we'll be in touch. And we'll clean up the language and then get you the, the, remind me, Julie, I'm, I'm sorry, my old age also. We post and then there's time for people to, to appeal. Is that right?
Julie seems to be muted, but, but yeah, that, that's, that's what happens. You post the notice in the paper.
I'm sorry, it'll get, the legal notice will get posted and you're right, it's 15 days from then. So.
All right. Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
For the consideration and also more importantly for the service to town and taking the time to do this stuff the right way.
And thanks for getting, for getting a lawyer who could present it so clearly.
Well, I just want to thank you all especially for scheduling a meeting just for us. I mean, that's a small town courtesy that I think makes both Michael and I so glad that we live here.
Hundred percent.
That was really very nice of you. I really appreciate that.
Our pleasure.
We really appreciate everybody's time. Truly, truly thank you.
Okay.
And we'll sign off.
We'll see you tonight now.
Invited to the, to the housewarming.
It's a deal.
You gonna put a fan in there?
Put a ceiling fan in. I'll make sure to have some beer and wine. Call up for it. It'll be my pleasure. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night now.
Good night.
And I think our only other, other order of business is the minutes from the last meeting.
I ordered those out earlier today.
Great. I vote to approve. I looked, I looked at them, they looked good to me.
A motion to approve.
I move that we approve the minute.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Just one more quick update because the last time we met, we had a long discussion about what was happening at the Carter property and whether they were going to appeal John's decision, which they did not appeal. And the zoning board ordered it to be taken down. It's not yet taken down. And the, whatever the legal machinations are involved with it are still ongoing.
Oh, that's such a shame.
But it's not, it's not, it's not in, in our, in our court anymore. So that's, that's a good thing. But it's unresolved. Still. And Julie, did you say that you thought there was another application coming?
Yes, I did hear that. Somebody has been working with John about filing one. It's something he can't grant.
Okay.
But he actually asked me today if I'd heard anything about it and I hadn't. So.
Okay. So business may be picking up again. Who knows? And hopefully they'll, hopefully more of them will be like this one than, than the ones we've been seeing.
Yeah, this was, this was great. I, I thought it was interesting just as an aside. I had realized that the 25% thing had to go in the back.
Well, it's interesting that you, I have it in front of me because in parentheses, it says, or away from the affected property line, no lateral expansion within that setback. So I'm not sure how to understand this. But it sounds like it doesn't have to be in the back. It can be elsewhere as long as it doesn't go into the setback. Is that how you understand it?
I guess, well, I guess it wouldn't come to us unless it didn't meet those requirements.
Julie, am I remembering this incorrectly or correctly, that John wouldn't approve it because it didn't go?
Right. John, John, right, John didn't because it didn't meet the requirements of that 25%.
Well, I think it's 25%. I, I think it's less than 25% of the house. Yeah.
The way I understood it is it couldn't because the nonconforming house was all, was within the setback. Even this couldn't get kicked out to the east, even though this portion was behind the setback.
I, I'm not sure I understand.
I think it has, with where the, where the encroachment is, I think it's, it can't be, it can't be, it's gotta be at the rear of the encroachment. Let's say there's sideline lines. You couldn't put it, you know, you couldn't put it on the, on the, on the back of the house, that further away from where the encroachment is. I believe that's what you're, you're seeing this. You know what I'm saying? Or?
I was, I was sort of picturing that you could not, you couldn't put it on the side of the house if it laterally expands into the setback.
Right, if the setback was like...
But you could put it on the lateral side of the house if it doesn't go into the setback.
I think that's...
Is that right?
I think that's accurate. I believe. You can only use that.
Right, right. And so he might as well save it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, maybe, maybe we'll ask John to come and talk to us about it so we can understand it. Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. Hopefully someday we'll meet in person.
Yeah, everybody get vaccinated.
Yep.
Yep. Yep, yep.
We're all vaccinated. We should be able to meet in person.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's great to see you all. And what a nice change for us.
Yeah.
Mess up with my, I don't know what was going on with my sound.
Oh, but here you are now.
Yeah, on the phone.
Oh, you're still on the phone. I see. Oh.
Yeah, I, I couldn't figure, I don't know how to do it. I'll have to get my computer man out here.
Well, you know, Sue, one, one time, I forget, I had, I think I had voice but no, I think I had audio but no video.
But no picture.
Yeah, or something. So sometime, and then the next time it was fine. So.
I've never had, I've never had to do this before, but I also don't zoom that often. You're, you're my main zooming contact.
All right.
Hey, make a motion to close the meeting or something?
Nancy, Nancy, do you want to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, Julie.
Goodbye. Bye, Sue.
Bye. I'm trying to close it out. There we go. Bye.